Okay. All right. Good evening. I'm calling to order the Planning and Zoning Commission for a regular meeting for Tuesday, the 18th of March. I apologize to the members of the public that have been waiting. We were just waiting to get all of our members here since we did start a little early. So with that, I'd ask you all to join me in prayer. Dear God, we pray that you will bless us and guide us through this meeting. Help us to have productive discussions that will broaden our perspectives. Help us to resolve any disputes gracefully and find principles that we can agree upon. Help us to generate good plans that are practical, sustainable, and easily implemented. Guide us towards the best way to take action to accomplish your goals. In your name we pray. Amen. And please join me in the pledges. First, the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
And God bless Texas. All right. Okay. With that, we shall move on to our agenda. First, item four, citizens' comments. Are there any citizens that want to make a comment tonight? Seeing none, I will move, close item four, move on to item five, approval, item five and item 5.1. Consideration and approval of the minutes from planning and zoning meeting of February 18th. I'll ask for a motion. I'll ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for February 18th, 2025.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, I will call for the vote, all in favor of approval of the minutes, say aye. Aye, aye. Are you abstaining?
I abstain.
Okay. So that's four, one. Four, four with one abstention, thank you. So the minute is approved. Okay, now we're going to move on to items for consideration, number six. First item under consideration is item 6.1, the consideration and action on a request of Patrick Short for approval of the replat of Lot 1 of Kentwood addition to create Lot 1B. And with that, I'll turn to ASA and staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. So the request is for the replat of a portion of Lot 1 in the Kentwood neighborhood, in the Kentwood addition, to create Lot 1B. This is a replat, and I just want to make a note that the replat is the final plat, and this plat follows the Demetria Carter, the D. Carter, which was the first replat we had in the Kentwood neighborhood as well. With that, staff is recommending approval of the replat to create the new Lot 1B.
All right, thank you. I'll now ask Mr. Short, you're with us, do you have any addition, any comments you want to add? Okay. All right, thank you. All right, with that, I'll ask for a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve the replat of a portion of Lot 1 in Kentwood addition, Glenaches and Rockwell County to create a new Lot 1B in this subdivision.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so the motion and a second. Now open for discussion. Sir?
I have no discussion.
Nothing?
What size were the lots? What size were the lots?
You mean in Kentwood?
Yeah, for what we're replating to.
2.5, SF 2.5.
Okay.
It's SF.
The lot's three, all right? Isn't the lot three acres?
Oh, I- The Kentwood neighborhood follows the SF 2.5 zoning.
It's zoning, yeah, it's zoning, but the lot itself is 3.0.
Okay.
Sir? No, nothing, Mr. Freeze, Mr. Ritz, any? No questions, okay. All right, with that, I have nothing to add, so with that, we'll call for a vote, all in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, show that 5-0. Thank you, Mr. Short. You may be, sir. Thank you for coming. All right, and with that, we'll move on to item 6.2, consideration and action of the request of Sandra Nassar Pool Experts for approval of zoning district change from SF 2.5 residential zoning and general GB, general business zoning district, to a general business, general, to a GB, general business district for development of additional commercial building for business expansion. And so with that, I will turn it over to ASA for staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. So the applicant is requesting a change in zoning. This lot is front portion along 205 is GB general business, back portion is SF 2.5. This is a pool expert business here, and they want to change the entire lot to general business. So if you look on the survey here, they have the expansion, so they currently have a business there now, and then they're showing an expansion of a showroom. And so what that would be is they would have, do their business kind of in the front, and then they would have pool, a pool showroom in the back, and so that's what the expansion of the business is. The expansion is the, in the back is the SF 2.5, which they want to make GB for the expansion of the business. And so with that, the staff is recommending approval, just kind of subject to the parking. There was kind of an issue with parking with the new structure, they wanted to do gravel parking, however, it is concrete parking that is city, so they're going to stick with their parking that's in the front. I've spoken with them about this, and this is a, an appointment-only business, and so which is why we did not, or I guess which is why we decided not to go with the gravel parking, because the parking that is, that would be kind of, would be sufficient for them to have appointment-only versus someone, you know, people coming in all throughout the day, it's not that kind of business, it's kind of by, by appointment only. And so with that, we are recommending approval.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Nothing to add. The applicant's not here, note that for the record. So with that, I'm going to ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, do we have a second? Motion to approve. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve with staff recommendation, I assume?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. And a second, so with that, I'm going to open it for discussion.
That was the main, I just want to go into discussion.
Yeah.
And what stops them from just having the additional parking with gravel as they, sorry?
Thank you, ma'am.
What stops them from, you know, with what their original plan was? That's the thing, even putting the stipulation on from what the staff is suggesting.
So the question was, what is to stop the applicant, the business owner, from just doing the gravel parking?
Right, right now they're making the agreement, they're making the deal, you know, but do we have from code enforcement point of view?
Well, it's in the code, that is-
I get it, but I'm saying what stops them from having people park on grass or on gravel? It looks like they're expanding their business, great for them, I love seeing that for the city, but they're not also planning for what additional business when you're doing the expansion would be, which you have more customers.
Let me say this.
First of all, the new system. The code requires parking to be concrete.
Right.
Okay, so when they make an application for this new building, they're going to have to provide parking. And the new parking, what the staff's recommendation is, is that they have to comply with the zoning regulations. Now, we are working on a, an amendment to the parking requirements that would allow gravel, but it hadn't come to you yet, and it hadn't been considered by the council. There is nothing, Commissioner Freeze, to keep people from parking on the grass or on gravel, there's nothing except for code enforcement. And when they make application for their new building, their new storage facility, there's a limited amount of parking that they're going to have to provide to satisfy the new parking requirement, and that, if you approve what we're recommending, will have to conform with our current regulations. Now, if the regulations change over the next couple of months, or maybe in May, then they'd only have to comply with the new regulations.
Okay, thank you.
Did I answer your question?
Yes.
Anything else? Tom, do you have any? No comments? Okay. Sir?
I've got a couple of things.
Yeah?
Has there been any talk of having a entryway from 205 versus the street, the, or the residential street?
Yes, we have done that, and actually, we talked to Tech dot, and they were absolutely opposed to having another driveway in that close proximity to the entry onto Heron. So their recommendation is to continue to have access to this piece of property off of Heron, rather than having a driveway that is within 125 feet of the existing Heron drive.
But if we, if we approve this, are we going to put a lot more traffic onto the residential street by them? I know they say they're by appointment only, but once we approve, if we approve it, and it turns to, we change it, then, and they decide, hey, our new business models, we're just going to be open all the time for anybody to come into, so have we now put everybody on a residential street that's coming over there? And in future, what if they decide they want to put a parking lot next to the showroom or the storage? There's houses around there.
There are.
So how do we, how do we control that if we change it?
So the answer to the question is that you're going to have a continuing interaction of residential traffic, because Heron's a dead end, with the commercial traffic that currently exists. And if they went to a 24/7 operation, there would be a lot more traffic on that first component between 205 and their northern access point. So the community, the people who live back there are going to have interface with commercial traffic on a continuing basis. The thing that I like about this particular opportunity is that there's no reason for anybody to go, who's going to the commercial enterprise, to go up into the neighborhood, and that'll, that should restrict additional traffic that would go into the neighborhood, pass the point of access off of Heron rather than off of 205.
But they're just going to have the one entrance into their parking lot for the time being?
That's my understanding.
And then in the future, if they wanted to expand the parking lot over to where the showroom is?
They have to get permission from us.
Okay. I guess my only other question is on page 18 and 34, it says, "This application is not consistent with future land use plan recommendations for the subject property."
Yes, sir, so if you look, I did a square around it in yellow, so that yellow is existing neighborhood, and so that is, if you allow this zoning change to go through, then it would be orange like the rest of it is there, and then it would be SH 205 corridor. So honestly, it would be, if you change this to GB general business, you would just be changing this to the, included in the 205 corridor. From this-
From the center line.
Is that me? Am I on?
Yes.
So a question about, I saw the showroom storage, it's not self-storage, but at least that's not what he's saying, that it's going to be.
Storage.
For his business.
Storage for his business.
If, and every, every other house in, off of Heron is 2.5.
That's correct.
And if this gentleman sold this property, now all GB, the new tenant can do whatever they want to it as long as it, it conforms to GB?
Yes, as long as it complies with the GB regulations.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm conflicted on this action for the following reason. We had a public hearing, and no one from Heron Circle showed up. Obviously, tonight, we're having this discussion for decision, no one from Heron Circle's here. So I have to assume that the neighborhood is good with that. I do believe, though, that the proposal is inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. Because both page 36 of the comprehensive plan, you know, heavy focus on preserving existing neighborhoods, which this is an existing neighborhood and is going to change it, qualify what, how much of a change that will be. And then on page 40, again, existing neighborhoods, that they need to be neighborhood-oriented, low-intensity, commercial in specific instances, when compatible with adjacent residential uses. So I potentially can make the argument for this business, but I share the concern that if this property is sold, it could be a, consistent with any other business application that exists within our ordinance, which could open it up broadly to a number of commercial establishments that would not be, no longer would be low intensity, and therefore will change the character of the neighborhood, right? And have, potentially have a detrimental impact on property values for that, for that neighborhood specifically. The other thing I'm concerned about is the storage facility, showroom, storage facility, which I understand is a future action, and we're not considering that tonight, but I do agree it's going to extend it back. And I have a question on the, specifically on the landscaping that's specified on page 20 of the packet, both landscaping and the screening, can, I know we make reference to the, our code, section 6.10, 6.8, but could you refresh me on what that means, what that translates into? I mean, are we going to have stringent screening, buffer screen here? Is that what that, is that what's demanded in the code?
Yes, sir, and I did speak with the applicant, she did, we kind of spoke about this, at length, kind of about some of the screening and some of the things like that, and so she is willing to follow the, our code and to do what we ask of her for that.
Okay. So I'm not in favor of this application unless there is a restriction that's placed that restricts any future land use here, any business use to this business. Sir?
So the commission has the authority to make a recommendation subject to the following conditions, as part of your recommendation to the council, so council, commissioner, you can, you can do that, and I think that's a good idea, because I want to try and restrict too much commercial with that close proximity to an existing residential neighborhood. So I like that, the concept of having a condition that restricts intense land uses adjacent to the residential that's existing on Heron, just to the, just to the east of this particular lot and across the street.
Okay. So a statement, something such as restricts future commercial use to low-intensity-like business applications would be acceptable?
It would be acceptable, however, Chairman Kivitt, I would recommend that between now and the time it goes to council, that we give a little more guidance, I mean, actually list out the land uses that we don't want to see, that currently allowed in the GB district. I mean, like, for instance, car wash.
I, yeah, my worry is, I'm not sure we're ever going to list everything properly, and we're going to miss something, or businesses will change. I, I think there has to be, I mean, there's some common sense application has to go here. Obviously, the applicant is, has created a business, it is a low-intensity business, I can't, I mean, I just don't see a lot of traffic in and out. Obviously, it's the kind of, it's the kind of service that are, I'm assuming pool services they provide are the full range of pool services at a fair assessment, so that's consistent with the needs of the community, I can, I understand that. But what I'm worried about is not what happens with this landowner, current owners, it's what happens if they choose to, you know, choose in the future, for whatever reason, to sell the property. Once it's rezoned, now it's, the restrictions are wide open.
Let me add one more thing.
Yeah.
If you want to say, subject to the condition, that the only land, land use that's allowed under GB is this, this one, pool, design, construction, service, and storage for that business, so that way, that runs with the land, assuming that the, the council agrees with that, and I think that they will, because it will restrict the potential adverse impact of GB district on the remainder of that residential community.
So, so what would those words be that we could, and I'm not, I mean, that's obviously my consideration, I would ask whoever made the motion to consider that.
Would consider it, and I would also want to understand, a new business comes there that does buy the property, because it's a great piece of property on our corridor, but they do want it for a different business, not a pool business. What's their remediation?
Let's assume, let's assume that the council agrees with whatever y'all do.
Sure. I'm saying, if we go down, the chairman's right.
The choice is to come back through this, through this and ask for change in zoning.
Okay. So, there is a way of remediating this for another future?
There's always a way to fix it.
Right.
Once it's done, because nothing's written in stone. And communities change, and councils and planning and zoning commissions change, and the demand for goods and services in the community change, depending on the, on who's living here. So, there's always a way to fix this.
Okay.
So, question on that. If, if they end up selling it, is that something they have to disclose, if it only be, say, we put it in a pool kind of like that, is that something they have to disclose to sell it?
Yes, sir.
Or do they sell it, and then you find out?
They have to disclose it, and, once the council adopts this, then we're going to file that ordinance with the county, so that when a title search comes around, they'll find that there's this provision that says, the only use that's allowed here is a pool, design, maintenance, and associated facilities.
Well, this will require a replat. Won't it require a replat?
I don't think so, sir. This, this property is already a platted lot, it's just got a zoning district that's in between the platted lot.
Right.
That, that kind of divides the, the lot in half. And there's a little bit more, and I think most of you realize that our zoning ordinance says that the GB zoning district along 205 is 200, 350 feet from the center line of 205. Well, the center line of 205, since that ordinance was adopted, has changed. And, but that ordinance also allows for the zoning administrator, or the person who is responsible for zoning, can actually increase that distance from 350 feet to 450 feet, if that gets you to the next adjacent property line. In this case, it doesn't do that. It's more than 100 additional feet to get to the next property line. And as a result of that, it's in front of you for a recommendation, and it's going to go, go to council. I think it probably makes good sense, but I really like where the chairman has tried to take this discussion, and that is to have some conditions in here that restrict the number, the kinds of uses that can go in to this new GB expansion.
Okay. Are we moving, are we comfortable, we're moving in the right direction?
If you get the right words.
Yeah.
Put in there.
All right, so.
I, I would say, I'm not even convinced we can get the right words. I mean, I, I think of Glenn Breier. Who owns that road?
Who, I'm sorry?
Glenn Breier Estates.
Oh, it's privately owned.
That's right.
And Heron, Heron is privately owned as well.
Correct.
I don't, I've heard that no one owns that road.
Which, oh.
Glenn Breier.
Yeah, I don't want to get into a discussion about the ownership of that road, but...
I don't, I guess I don't trust the system to protect the rest of the people on Heron Circle.
Okay.
So, I, I would still be, I don't know if you could, I don't know if it's going to be an answer.
Okay.
I, I lean the same way. Because I, I just think that, once we approve it, and if their business takes off, what if they hire 20 people that are cleaning pools, they got those 20 vehicles they have stored there?
So, all right.
Even before you started trying to put the additional, or started putting in the additional consideration, I was still for it in the beginning. It's a business that's blooming in our city, it's opening up more business on the corridor. The fact that you have a business next to more of a residential spot, I mean, when you went to the residential spot, you knew at that point that was still the business for corridor that was planned, so you get what you pay for.
We're not, we're not changing the nature of the business that exists.
Right. I'm agreeing with that, I'm just saying, from the point of view of, one of the reasons for going in and providing the, the initial motion was that, I'm fine with it before you started talking about the restriction. I do like that the restriction is now helping us shape it a little bit more, so that we can provide some insulation to that community. But the whole fact that community was already adjacent to a GB, I mean, you built your house there, you knew that was the corridor. But I like the idea of the, the additional restriction. I think that it helps provide more safety for that community. That was before, I, I was for this before that. I understand.
But when, but when they built the houses, it was 250 feet.
Well, the houses, the house was built as a residential home, and it's been converted, as I understand it. And the really, the real zoning change here is to allow for the expansion of the storage facility showroom, right? That's, that's the, that's why there's a request.
Yep.
Okay, good, got that right. Tom?
With the proper restrictions, I don't see it as well.
Okay. All right. So...
So, I'm willing to amend my...
Do you want to amend your motion?
Yes, if I can have some assistance from Mr. Cooper.
Sure.
Let's get down to some verbiage that sort of highlights the best approach we think of what that motion amendment should state.
Okay, so, the motion is, I move to approve the change in zoning from SF 2.5 to general business on the remainder of this lot, subject to the following condition, that the only uses allowed on this property are those related directly to the pool service, design, and storage of materials for pool service and design uses.
I got, back to, move to approve. Can you start?
Subject to the condition.
Are only related directly to a pool.
Pool design.
Engineering, you got to give them, give them a little help.
If, if I had a keyboard, man, I'd be like, come on, man, keep talking to this bastard. This is a lost art.
I'll be even more specific. Swimming pool, design, construction, maintenance, and materials storage. Is that okay?
I'm satisfied with that, yes.
Yeah, I mean, I think it serves what we were intending, and I like that idea, even though it was for it from the beginning. I like being able to say that we're doing our best to protect the use that's adjacent to, so I like it.
And by pushing that GB, I know I'm not trying to sell it now, but, but pushing it up there, it, it actually kicks in all of that landscaping and screening that we have in section six, to be effective. And because it's not, that piece that's zoned SF 2.5 on that lot, doesn't come anywhere close to two and a half acres. In fact, the whole property is just two and a half acres, all in. So, it could never really be a residential tract unless they went to the board and caused replating and all that other stuff that goes with that.
Okay, so I'm going to try. Mr. Coker, cap.
Okay. Okay, I, I had one worry, one thing you might consider, where it said, it was for, the changes from SF 2.5 residential zoning and general purpose, it's both, it's on both ways, and we're changing it to general purpose, just for completeness, I guess.
B to GB only. Okay.
Okay.
We may ask for a do-over, but I'm going to do this. I'm going to make a motion to move to approve the lot, I already closed one book here. The lot on, let's see, what is this property? Lot 1, block A, Heron addition. Oops. Wrong one? Here, I went back to four. Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve from SF 2.5 and GB to GB only, the lot at, and I'm still struggling to see the address on that, though, on 6.2.
Just say Lot 1, Block A, Heron addition.
Block 1, Lot A, Heron addition, which is what I was actually saying before he actually turned my page on me.
I'm sorry.
Subject to the following additional constr, restriction, is that its only uses are allowed are those directly related to the swimming pool, design, construction, maintenance, and material storage uses.
All right. Good. It's like, we good? We good? Angela? I need the city secretary to, because she's the one that's...
I can give you a scribble, and we can work through it together.
Got to get all of this.
I have it, and I have it, I have you on.
Well, do you want to read it back to us then, and just...
No, I don't have it written down. I will read it, I will go back and listen to the...
Oh, okay, okay. All right, very good. Okay, as long as, as long as we're clear.
It will be correct, I promise.
Okay. So, we have a motion to approve, subject to the conditions. Do we need to address a parking question in that then? Okay. Since that's inferred. Yeah?
The naming application to that building, we're going to make them apply.
Got it. Okay, good. So, with that, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
One second.
Tom, seconds. Does I have a motion, a second, any further discussion? No, 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 no. Everybody's happy with that, I will call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay. And Asa, just when you write that up, the final report, I'd like to see that before it goes to council, so we make sure it's, council has a full understanding of what we're doing. I appreciate anybody who has a business and wants to bring that to McClintock and Chisholm. I also, you know, I am committed to make sure we protect our residential communities, and that, and along 205 is especially going to be difficult decisions in the future, so... thank you. I thank the commission for that consideration. All right, with that, I'm going to move on to item 6.3, which is a consideration and action regarding the approval of the preliminary plat that provides for the creation of two single-family lots on five acres of land each. Generally, it located at 1691 East FM 550. Asa, staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. So, the applicant is requesting the approval of the preliminary plat to split 10 acres into two five-acre tracts of land, Lot 1 and Lot 2. The application is administratively complete and conforms with our subdivision regulations, and with that, staff is recommending approval.
Okay. I have one, one clarification question before we do the call, and that's, is this in the ETJ or in the city?
This is in the city.
In the city limits? Okay, thank you. All right, with that, I will ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion to, for approval of the preliminary plat that provides for the creation of two single-family lots on five acres of land each, located generally at 1691 East FM 550.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No?
I do have a question.
Tom? Yeah?
The, so, the, is the owner of this land, the house that's already there?
Yes.
Okay, so, and, and, and they're going to take their driveway and extend it?
Yes.
There's, there's no other way to get it?
So, the house that is there now is the father, and so that's at the front, and so the daughter is in the back, five acres.
Okay.
And so, that's how they're going to do that. My understanding is that that piece will front off of, the portion that's being created in the back will front off of Rosemarie.
Oh, oh, it'll, it'll come in now?
Yeah, they're not going to extend the driveway, so it'll just front off of Rosemarie.
Okay, thank you.
Other than, we're required to access it through the first law.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Okay. Any other questions? Any other discussion? No? Tom, any? No? Okay. Okay, with that, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Show that 5L for approval. Hi, folks?
We're full experts.
Yeah. We, we, we've already had the discussion.
Okay. It's okay? It's all good?
Yes, it was approved.
Sorry to interrupt.
Yes. There, there is a contingency, though, that the, in record, it will be, and this is to protect future land uses, is, it will be, you guys will use it as a pool, design, construction, storage, showroom. But if, in the future, if there's a desire to change it, it'll have to come back through any, all the considerations for rezoning. Okay? You're, you're okay with that?
Yeah.
Beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. Love it when there's happy customers. And with that, I have nothing further on the agenda. Any, any announcements, the, any members of the commission want to share?
Vote this coming May 3rd. Vote and learn all about the charter that's on the ballot.
Okay.
That's all I have to say.
All right. So, for those online, the third, we have a city charter proposal that is on the ballot. All of the information is on the website. There has been a couple, several public hearing, or not public hearing, town halls.
Couple more to come, couple more town halls to come.
More town halls to come. If you have any questions, the, it will be mailed to everybody in the city that's a registered voter, or every resident. I always get that confused.
It's every registered voter.
Every registered voter.
And it will be out by the 24th. All, all packets will be mailed by the 24th.
Great.
So, they should be receiving them soon.
And I noticed something in today, in the code, when I was just reading it, yet one more fact, if we want to consider between general purpose, general law city, and charter, is planning and zoning actually would have greater authorities under a charter to be able, or do more of what we just discussed, right? Which is more about shaping future land uses, so, it's a fact, it's, has, the general law city have, or a, yeah, general law cities are more restricted. And who knows what will come out of the 89th legislative session.
Yes.
All right. So, anything else? Any, sir? And you will be with us at the next meeting?
Yes.
All right. That's what I love to hear. Should be here. The next meeting, Angela, what date are we looking at on the calendar? Sometime in April, it sounds like?
April 15th.
April 15th.
It's an auspicious day. Yeah, I'm traveling in D.C.
Okay, you are traveling. I will not be here. I will be on vacation.
I think I'll be here.
Okay.
It's a long way to be here, I should be.
You should be. What is the early, early voting period? When does it start?
Early voting starts on the 22nd.
Okay.
And it will go through the 29th, but the council chambers will be unavailable until after May the 3rd.
Right, that's, and I'm, you're, I'm leading the witness. Asa, do we, what are we projecting a, for an agenda? Do you have agenda items already lining, lining up, or is it a...
I don't have any agenda items lining up right now.
Is that because you're at the door?
Yeah, but, no, maybe a little bit.
Yeah, something like that. This is, this is Asa's last meeting, yes, so...
But I don't, I don't have anything. I think the only thing that is kind of more or less outstanding is legacy trails, but I think other than that, nothing is, I can't think of anything on the agenda for the 15th meeting.
All right. All right, so, anyway, we're, so we're targeting the fifteenth of Tax Day. Wonderful day to have a meeting of your government action. All right, well, that's it. You guys gonna be, you're, you're traveling, as am I. Tom, you're gonna be here on the fifteenth?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, good, well. All right, okay, with that, I will call the meeting to adjourn. Any objections? No? So moved, meeting's adjourned.